Good. All right. Good evening, everyone. Meeting, welcome to the August 2nd meeting of the planning board. At this time, I'll call the meeting. If everyone would please put their phones on silent, vibrate, whatever it is that will make them so they do not disturb anybody. If we could start with a roll call of attendance. On the far end.
Kathy yellow.
Yeah.
Tess here.
Alan present. Staff updates? Oh. Alright, motion to appoint Donna Masucci as a full member is opposed to an alternate.
Or I'm appointing her then as the chair.
Alright.
A lot of practice.
Review and approval of minutes. Please for a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a motion we approve the minutes from July 19th.
I think it will.
Andy.
Andy, okay. For second. Roll call.
Okay, Kathy yellow, I.
Andy MI.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan I.
Napa.
Thank you for the novel. Ron, I think most of it was. It's a lot of quality reading.
I think the back.
But I appreciate all the fine questions and the details to make sure that a lot's worth.
Taking Jeff's spot.
I'm getting in the.
Proper.
I'm getting in the minutia. I noticed. Okay. Staff update.
Thinking about. The board's goals and having a calendar here. I know we have. zoning discussions were coming up and. Master plan. Readdress the rules of procedure. I'm sure that might be better to talk at the end, but I still want to do. Hold over. Have ideas. Some regulations that we wanted to. We just approved. But.
Well, the ones we, we put in the war last time, not all of that.
For the zoning.
Yeah, so I think it'd be good to relook at those and see if we want to do those again. I think some of them didn't get approved. It's because of misunderstandings. Like signs being posted and stuff. I feel like if we go at that.
Item number five was a discussion with the board for preliminary conceptual review, which I believe was requested to be moved to the end of the meeting. Any objection from any of the board? Okay, item five will be moved to. Item six, we have application. Yes.
Traditionally, you have. extension beginning of the. Agenda was set. We updated online.
Yep, so I would like to move to the. So that to start meeting with the revocation of the one-year extension for 239-1.1-TC-21-2. Sub. Asked by the applicant for two lot subdivision. Any objections to moving that to the front of the meeting? Alright, then at this time, I would like to ask Mr. Henderson.
Chief. Right here. David Henderson is here. Okay, thank you very much.
So the, the floor is yours. You have a request to revoke the one-year extension that was approved at the prior meeting?
You're talking to David Henderson?
Yes, Mr. Henderson.
Yes, right. We just came off a two-year wait for Mr. Garvey. And then all of a sudden, we show up with another. A year extension. I don't understand that. I mean. We've been waiting and waiting to sell this property and.
No money.
Strung us out like a. I can't describe it. So. Need that extension taken away.
Also, this is daughter right here, it's actually Kimberly Henderson, and my dad is 91 years old. He would like to live long enough to be able to sell this property. Mr. Garvey has taken total advantage of him. And just prolonged this. He, he could have bought this two years ago, but he just, he just won't. And he's done everything. We're in North Carolina and. We can't be there to fight this and it's horrible what he's been doing to him.
Mr. Henderson, is he, you have the owner record? On the property?
Yes. You, do you have a record of the property he's asking?
You're the, you're the owner of the property.
He is, yes, yeah.
So it's a. Yes.
Do you have a request of writing to the board that came in after the agenda was set out? So it's done as. Number eight, which Barbara had passed. It shows the letter that was sent to Mr. and Mrs.
Yeah, I want to say my mother.
Stating that. He had previously. Application of it. And I received this email back. Not from Mr. David Henderson. One-year extension.
But my question is staff, do you, I mean.
Is the owner of record?
This seems like a no brainer, we should.
Correct, so. For you to save that agent in the file would be. Harvey.
So what we have before us is the termination of Mr. Garvey's rights as the agent and the rescinding of the. One-year extension for the subdivision.
And the whole, like project.
Yep. Good. So.
Looking for motion?
Looking for a motion.
And make a motion that we rescind the one-year extension in the subdivision of the parcel. For application 239-1.1-TC-21-2.
Thank you.
Don't.
I think I said that, but. I said in, in, in subdivision.
So I have a motion from Mr. Allard, a second from Mr. Driscoll, looking for a roll call vote.
Masucci, I. Kathy yellow, I.
Still on?
Andy MI.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan I.
Napa.
Mr. Henderson, Mr. Garvey's rights have been rescinded and the subdivision has been rescinded as well. You should be good to go. With that parcel.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much. I wish somebody could advise us on what, how to get paid or get him off of this whole deal, but. I guess we really don't have. Get a, yeah, get a Realtor lawyer. Okay, so we're good to go?
This is just to announce the price and town staff. I'll be sending you a letter one time showing that. Send another letter, that's what.
Thank you so much. Just let us know when we need to sign off. I don't want to bug you guys. It's so hard to, to hear you guys too. I don't know why my connection's so bad.
Should be all set. If there's anything you have in question to it, don't hesitate to reach out to the town staff. And we wish you the best of luck with the. Dealing with the balance and the sale of your property.
Oh, thank you so much. I really appreciate you guys. And my dad's here and he thanks you so much. You guys have a great day.
You as well. Next, next item. Agenda, item six, a 254-11-RC-22. Outdoor seating for consulting group LLC requesting. Outdoor seating. The applicant here. Please come on up. Yep. Are you folks to see?
Good, how you doing?
So formal application for outdoor seating.
Yep. I think we did everything.
I'm looking for a motion to accept application. For outdoor seating as complete.
Make a motion to accept. Who's that number?
254.
Application as complete. Second.
So motioned by. Sorry. It is Bob and seconded by Ron. And the hotter it gets. It's a single be functioning. Roll call vote.
Masucci, I. Kathy yellow, I.
Andy MI.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan I.
Any other. Questions, comments, concerns, issues bears have been in place. I know we've had a lot of discussion.
These barriers pinned.
Professionally installed by Shea. Shea Concrete Company.
Okay, plain as comments is Jersey Bears 210. So. That was. You can't tell.
Sure what that means?
Usually rebearers driven down on the ground so they can. Out of the move.
That's what the, I had two conversations. You just said put barriers up. I don't know if. Wasn't very.
Why that of Cozy's?
He'd be dead, so I would just say.
They're in combination, the Jersey Bears are in combination with previous strips that were there. I know that the strips are pinned. So that wasn't something that Police Chief mentioned.
What's pinned? The curbs or the?
The curb.
Yeah, curb stops are pinned for sure.
Yeah, curb stops. And then behind that, in conjunction with the curb stops, which are pinned, is the Jersey Bears, which are close to 4,000 pounds.
So I don't believe these are pinned down. When they're pinned, they're actually pinned together. Is what the pinning is. And if you look at Cozy's, it's a very different. Set up. Yeah. Than what theirs is.
So you're saying pinned between the two?
Yeah.
Because the police chief said that we could actually leave it open and use it as an entrance. We have not done that.
He told us to leave three feet in between them.
The, the pinning of them actually is part of. I can understand why they were stated as being pinned, because the pinning is what creates additional. Ballast so that if somebody smashes into it, doesn't.
So like on a roadway, when you have 100 in a row and they're all connected, one can't go without the other.
Right, they all move kind of in sync.
See, I've, I've seen somewhere where somebody thinks the universe is a forward and they go forward and smash through a. Store, I mean. So many things you could see of that. That's what, that's what we're concerned about here.
There was no mention from Police Chief or from the Park Chief.
The only other thing I'll mention is Cozy's, they put a wooden barrier above them. I don't think they inspired that. I stopped in and tried to ask them why they did that. I mean, they did that on their own.
They did.
Well, it's kind of decorative. It has their.
Decorative, yeah.
I think it might have created the headlights too.
Sound prevention maybe.
But they. We didn't require that of them. I just mentioned that they did it. I'm sure they had a reason for it.
That was what their contractor for it had specked out when he provided the details.
Did they edit the map?
No, it was part of the, it was part of the project. I remember seeing it. I don't have an issue scrapping out a pinning.
Do you have any good graffiti artists?
I was actually.
Is it?
Oh, good.
Dress it up some. I think it'd be more. Yeah. And will you be having umbrellas?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I already have that.
So I'm scratching the pinning Jersey barriers. Is there anything? Anything else that anyone had any questions or concerns? Looking for a motion to approve application.
No, no.
Waivers.
The applicant has requested two waivers. You can go in the. Okay. Advocants are required to have the site plan. Probably prepared to stand by the professional years. The boundary. By license survey protection 3.1. But one of the site plans. Regulations.
Make a motion to waive section 3.1.1 of the site plan review regulations for the reasons stated by the town plan. Roll call vote.
Masucci, I. Kathy yellow, I.
Just go on.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan I.
Napa.
The second request waived in the applicant's requirement to address the unfulfilled checklist. Review regulations. Not granting the waiver as opposed to unnecessary hardship to the applicant. The current waiver not be registered in.
I'll make a motion to waive section 1.5.2 of the site plan review regulations, again for the reasons stated by the town plan. Seconded by Ron Allard. Roll vote.
Napa.
Alan I.
Tessie, you're I.
Andy MI.
Just go on.
Kathy yellow, I. Masucci.
Do we have public comment? Yes. At this time, I'll open it for public comment. Is there anything they would like to raise or address?
Is there anybody on the phone that would like to speak for or against the application?
Big night tonight.
Is there someone on the line?
This time, I'll close public comment. Please for a motion to approve the application 254-11-RC-22.
I make a motion, we approve the application 254-1. 1.1-RC.
We gotta read the draft notes of decision first.
That you agree. It's 254-11-22. The fairing concerning. To view the application. For our ten years, permitting use in regional. Add outdoor seating. The total occupancy. Any changes to site use from operation of business or supply. We have a patient and review the planning board. Two additional waivers were approved. Requirements have all site plans. Prepared stand by professional years. Boundary monument. Probably by a licensed survey for section 3.1. Second waivers. Time to address the checklist, section 1. Two, the site plan.
Very much. Now, I request a motion to approve.
I've asked for it three times. I mean, I don't blame you.
I'll make the motion to approve application 254-11-RC-22. With all conditions and precedents noted by. Roll call vote.
Masucci, I. Kathy yellow, I.
Andy MI. Tessie, you're I.
Alan I.
Congratulations.
Alright, thank you.
Go forth, be proudable.
760, application 260-20-RC-22. T-SR. Requested by the applicant for out of the dumpster to be stored at 80 East Road.
Apologize, go ahead.
Does anyone have anything that they would like to discuss before reviewing if the application is complete? Not our request to motion to approve application 263-20-RC-22-SR as complete.
Second.
Did I have a first?
You asking for.
No, I was asking if somebody would like to make a motion. So is your second a first? Am I making the motion officially at that point?
I'll make a motion that the application 263-20-RC-22-SR. It's up to the.
I'll second that.
That guy bought them. Alright. Comments from the board. Like to request. Oh. Can I not take a vote? Okay. Roll call vote then.
Masucci, I. Kathy yellow, I.
Andy MI.
Tessie, you're I.
Alan I.
Napa. Sure you don't want to take over? Because I'm on a struggle bus tonight. So dumpster storage, I miss, it looks like you have an asphalt pad that you're putting in to store them on. Or.
Purpose of the dumpsters is. Can you tell me what the purpose of them?
So he is starting up a dumpster company. It's for demolition dumpster usage, so it's not going to be any trash inside these dumpsters. We wanted to go residential, so it's 10-yard and 15-yard dumpsters. Nothing too big. We are running Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM through 4:00 PM. Shouldn't disturb anybody with that. Like you said, the dumpsters are coming in only empty, but be nothing coming in from the property to the business.
Customer calls, wants one, you bring it out, and it comes back empty.
Generally, it's a seven-day rental. Our radius is five miles. One truck and a secondary truck, just in case.
I see it says time to time a clean dumpster will be displayed for. Size confirmation of general. Where would that be located?
What's the driveway up here? Gravel. They're sitting where they have to go pick it up. What, how do they get up there? What's the material of the driveway?
Right. And the secondary one is on the opposite side of the cemetery. I interpreted. That was the initial. Mr. Dyer had gotten premises. Second one had two. All we did is we just put a general grade gravel in there. Usually did that. I want the. Cars on Pierce Road. Straight on and off. Especially during the winter months. Furniture company at the end. Said I described the road. Going straight out to 125. The additional thing too is traffic is very. Possible times to go left is very dangerous. City. Fire department, looking at it, would rather go right turn. Trucks leave its right turn around the traffic circle. It just takes a few extra minutes and guys would probably like to grab a coffee. Makes good sense. I'd rather try to cross over.
Are you planning on having other haul companies come in and pick dumpsters as well? Candidly, I have a decision to go straight across and where your sight lines are much better at 125. Um, and I mean, taking a right, right only is. That, that would be a preference, but.
It's a lot simpler. It's your complex.
The, the end of Pierce Road right there by, um, the truck company is notorious for accidents, so that's getting away from that and into. Where you come out farther down where your sight lines are better would be a much. Option for use of sucker and. Any comments, questions, or concerns from the board?
Absolutely, five teams mentioned that.
But yeah, it'd be nice to get it approved tonight so you don't have to come.
Yeah, that makes sense, I don't think that much.
Well, to be added into. Right, under. Right now, that's the way this is written. But that's why I brought it up. Pure dumpster storage is not about use.
I don't see right turn only on the.
Right turn only when accessing Route one twenty-five.
What kind of noise will it be making down the surrounding neighborhood?
Very little.
I would also note if, uh, you folks are familiar with the property, the parcels to it is a town owned lot that the town has, um, been working with Hard Rock to. Toward developing as commercial development.
Rock A K?
No. Hard Rock L O S. It's gonna be tracker bar. I thought that was going on one twenty-five.
Another question, what's the distance between Pierce Road to your pad? Which pad, which dumpsters are gonna be the distance on that road? The bany lighting, is there any necessary?
There's some lighting that is. Street lighting. I had new. They have to pay for the. Had a. Building vapor, and the new lights so that the cost would go down.
Just so.
Not quite as bright as the old ones, but the ones.
Speak louder.
The full members, I remember.
I know.
Okay, so, is everybody satisfied with their questions? Any other questions? Comments, concerns? Hearing none, at this point, I would, uh, open public comment. If we could have you folks go aside for us. Thank you.
Mark Morrow, Barrington Road Agent.
I'm Mark. People wanna see me, no?
You do. Your flowing locks and your good looking face. Thank you.
Okay. As far as the highway department goes, impacts are very, very minimal. Uh, it's not even worth talking about any impact of the road because that little stretch going across is not gonna require any more maintenance than normally would. Um, I think one. Plus to the town to be gained by this is. There's a need in the town for this kind of business. And really, I mean, once, I think, once word gets out about this, it will serve to let's take a lot of the look. Off of our transfer station, it's all the bulk materials we have to accept there. I mean, now I know we get paid for it. Is it a money maker? Probably not. A lot of people are reluctant. Go to the big outfits, have these cans put in their yard like waste management, does their either cost or they don't like dealing with a big company. For a lot of times, the containers that they offer are just plain too big. For the, for the purpose, so these containers here are sized right. I really think the, the town can't help but, uh. But come out a little bit on top with what the material that is saved going into the transfer station. Uh, noise, again, you've got these things parked on a, on a recycled asphalt pad, it's almost the same thing, it's just dumping them on bare ground, no noise. As versus concrete or, or asphalt. On a personal note. That is, that is a very iconic old time there. And all the uses that could, that that place could potentially afford. Think this one is probably one of the better ones. Barrington is always looking to preserve rural character. That building is about as rural as you can get. This business will not really do anything to diminish that. Just a, just a nice old place. I was brought up in a place very similar to that. My family wasn't quite so lucky, the person that bought my homestead burned it to the ground, fire breaking. Save something like this is huge, especially allowing Patty Dyer to still live there in the process. A noble thing, good thing, so far as I'm concerned, it's all pluses. My humble opinion.
Thank you. Right.
Wish I had something nice to say.
Does anybody have any, any other comments or concerns? I'll close public comment at this point in time. Vanessa, would you like to read the notice of decision?
To leave.
Oh, the waivers, yes. Sure.
Waiver request from applicant. Must have site plans shall be prepared by a standard professional here. Boundary monuments certified by a licensed surveyor per section three point. Like. Granting the waiver is closing unnecessary hardship to applicants and granting the waiver will not be contracted with clear intention.
Make a motion to waive section three point one, one, site plan regulations for the reasons noted by. Robert. Call vote.
Sutchi I.
Happy L O I.
E N E M I.
Tessie R.
Al R I.
Happy.
The second request waiver from applicant is a purpose of. Stressing unemployment checklist, section one, five point two, the site plan review station. Not granting the waiver be. Not granting the waiver is closing unnecessary hardship to applicant, granting the waiver not to contract with clear intention.
I make a motion we waive, uh, section, uh, one point five point two, site plan review regulations for this application.
Second. Call vote.
Sutchi I.
Happy L O I.
E N E M I.
Tessie R.
Al R I.
Notice of decision.
Notice of decision. For the approval of the change of use for the intended use in regional commercial voting districts on Article nineteen of the twenty twenty-two, volume one, seven, one. To add industrial use or contractors' storage and equipment yards. The first hours of operation are Monday through Friday, seven A M. to five P M. and Saturday, eight A M. to twelve P M. The barn is.
Right turn only. Would be reviewed and approved by the factory. They're doing hot work, they're not doing hot work.
They don't do that, right? Selling, cutting, bracing, cooking. Hot work.
Have a right turn only when accessing Route one twenty-five. Any changes to the site use of operation and business or require reapplication and review by the planning board. That. Board approved both the waivers. Department has. Boundary monuments certified by licensed surveyor, section three. Site plan review station. Have. Section checklist, one. Site plan review.
Motion to approve. Application two sixty-five dash twenty dash R C dash twenty-two dash S R. Make a motion we approve. Patient two six three dash two zero dash R C dash. S R. With. Precedent. Condition.
It's noted by S F. Second. Only the call second.
Call vote.
Sutchi I.
Happy L O I.
E N E M I.
Tessie R.
Al R I.
I've heard you called worse.
That's true.
Congratulations, good luck on your project.
Good move, bring your, good move, bring your daughter up.
And good luck at Wentworth, my son graduated last year. Yep, architecture.
Really, I'm computer engineer.
Uh, excellent grade school. Oh, it's fantastic.
Excuse me.
Next on the agenda is. With the board for Mr. Paul Thibodeau, five construction of six. Six action key structures.
He doesn't share very well.
Alright.
I have an extra one.
I saw this.
I have an extra one of these.
There's nothing worse, it was.
Here, sir. Thank you. My name's Paul Thibodeau. Here in Barrington. Slot out nine, a from. Hound Grove Cemetery. Center. Uh, give a few. Big tax map. The other small sheets are.
Sorry, excuse me. Ladies.
That's okay, no, they.
Excuse me.
Get familiar.
We're just trying to figure out where it's.
Okay, across from the cemetery. Right across the street from the cemetery. Three more times. So the plans I've given you are preliminary, but. Watch the finished look that I'm after, so the, the eight and a half by eleven sheets. Entry side view. Shows the porch and the single. Second, these photos shows commercial side. Facing Route nine. Section would be the basement of those, the building above it and would be used as commercial space. Booted is two plans, the basement, first floor of residential. Basement shows a commercial area of about one hundred and eighty square feet. Use. Which is allowed in this zone. With a double hall that appear for the fire separation, but a portion of that basement. Being retained for use for the mechanics and so on, building. Eventual of it. The. Parking and. Building layout is on this larger sheet that you have. This is a survey that was completed. Um, you see I've drawn four blocks there, they are pretty much to scale, it's not, we're not drawn by the surveyor, but they're the best entered. So there's six units, they would all look exactly the same. The parking below the big. Hammerhead, I'll call it, be parked for the commercial as well as handicap spots in front of the commercial use. And then to the left of the rectangle, you see a driveway coming up. In between buildings five and six. That will offer access in. Trucks as required. I can see that we'd be asking for would be that driveway that was up in the back, cuts through the fifty foot setbacks slightly from the left one. Um, on that left side, the slope comes down quite a bit, it would be a much gentler climb to go through that opening. And also when I bought this lot from Mr. Henderson, who we were on a few minutes ago. This, uh, setback was non-existent, I talked a lot. And I'm having to contend with that. Well, I'm here asking for your thoughts, recommendations about the. Proposal as a whole before I, uh, send it to engineers to.
Slope from the, of the parking area to entry. General slope who requires stairs.
From the parking, from the commercial to commercial?
Yeah, to enter the.
Yeah, it'd be. As level as I can.
Yeah.
Our sons are the solar business, so I've been learning a lot about it.
So, solar is permitted in the town center, so it's already permitted use.
That's good. I didn't think. Okay.
What's the distance between the houses? About thirteen feet?
Just about. Yeah.
I was looking at that rear drive, rear parking area in the hammerhead. I'm thinking the distance, you have to run driveways down to each garage.
I could close, I could make it.
Yeah. Originally, I thought, originally, I was thinking of a road right off of the lower parking lot. Houses three and four. And then a T intersection, modified T intersection that would go up, left, and over right. Could even use for snow, you know, push the snow into the property setbacks. And, and then off that, you would have maybe two spaces for each unit for a visitor, maybe a second car.
So my thoughts behind that were twofold. One is the slope.
Slope.
The slope on that left side, you see that?
Yep.
All right, at two sixteen, two eighteen. So that, that's going to be a nice, easy slope to go up. And second is getting a fire truck up there and then getting enough swing around it and straightening that rig out to turn around. Again, engineering has to address that. But I see what you mean as far as that long parallel line I have. I mean, that, that could be turned towards the buildings that I.
Play with it, right?
Yeah, someone other than me.
The chief, you know, the chief's app. Just having the turnaround, he'll be happy.
Yeah. Yeah, but you're right, there's a lot of distance in between the unit and that, and to me, that's kind of wasted space because it, it could be recreational use on the other side of that driveway.
Right.
And, and I'll have some somewhere, and that would make sense to put it there. You comment about the rail downstairs, you're right. Of.
During the town, even the town center. So therefore, you can only do what's permitted in the town center. So that table right there where it says P, that'd be the only thing you'd be allowed to do.
It says maybe combine any non-residential uses otherwise permitted in this district as part of a mixed use development.
You're talking, you're talking mixed use, right?
Right.
This is mixed use, so if you do a mixed use, you can do anything that's allowed, allowed in that district. So then what's allowed in the district is on table one. Well, if it says P, it's what allowed in that district. So that's, that's the only thing.
TP's allowed in the district too, if you do the commission.
Yeah. Doesn't say, or it's a condition.
You have any questions, John?
You have to request, you have to request it.
Right, you have to. You take a list of the uses that you plan on having in that bottom one.
Okay, yeah.
Forget those uses. Out of this application. Someone come in with a different type of use. On and someone wanted. Wasn't one of the approved uses, you'd have to come back to the planning.
Okay, okay.
And there are some things that it dashes like yourself.
Each individual homeowner.
No, homeowners have nothing to do with this, they're just up above.
They're above, it's commercial space.
You have to come back, your residential use.
So the homeowner won't own any portion of that basement except where the mechanicals are.
Yeah.
Are you thinking your market is for someone who wants a home business?
No, I, I see that happening. You know, my sister, for instance, she's a therapist. And she said, boy, that'd be great for me because she's been trying to work out of her own home in Alton, and it hasn't been working out because of the floor plan. So I could see that happening. It would be an ideal situation for somebody.
What's the height of your building?
The height? Um, the height on the, on the three sides. It's about, um, twenty-seven to thirty feet. Common size on the back sides add ten feet to that.
Town center, Donna, they allow some stories.
Do they?
If you read the depth.
Just a design feature that, where the garage is, you're obviously going to have a lot of concrete showing because of the slope.
Yeah.
So, so that's just something.
Don't be retaining wall there.
That's what I was.
Yeah, the grades are a little up. The siding. Septic systems, the test pits, we found in the lot. Here, I think. Leach field. Stonewall. But it also shows a partial stone wall, back line. There's a, the setback there. And the leach fields will run the same shape as the driveway comes. Long enough, thinking separate system. Separate. Each unit may have. Maybe one, you have two, or two units will have one system, I'm just not sure. It's going to make sense financially or. And as far as the well, seems to be a lot of water out there, so I don't know if I'll have one. I don't know if I'll have one or five, but. We may even have to set up a pump station there to move the water around the facility, I'm sure.
Fire chief. Recommend for that. As far as fire protection.
Yeah, he's already mentioned, uh, he's going to want a cistern there.
Okay.
Yeah, um, we did do a, we did do an application a while ago when I rescinded it because I realized I just wasn't ready. But the fire chief commented on it, uh, before I rescinded it, and, and he'd mentioned that, the cistern, and I, I expected that. There isn't one within a thousand feet of this property, so. I'm going to have to buy a big swimming pool.
Love very many.
I can cover it, yeah, I got a thirty thousand gallon. Thought we should be able to stock it with trout or something, but anyway.
Um, I'm struggling with the parking area. Is it ways out for the commercial and then also access for the driveways up and down? The, the flow and the, how you park?
Andrew, I agree with you. I engineered it and draw this, I did.
Yeah.
So, um, I don't have a CAD program to, I can draw these plans, I can do that, but I can't, I can't, he'll do something much, that makes much more sense with much better flow. And, and I, I, what I was doing, I'm thinking this one, so, you know, but. Concept is one entrance into the lot. An area for parking for the commercial in front of the units for the handicap access. And then cut off somehow to get around the back of the property.
And I'm putting a couple of.
Yes, exactly.
Then looking at, um, essentially like a forty-foot drive coming in or, um, and what I'm thinking is traffic coming one way, traffic coming the other way.
That's what I'm looking at. Again, engineering will look at that.
You need a wetlands crossing for that, I see on the map.
Um, I did apply for them for the state and I did pursue a temporary permit to log.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm told by engineering that, um. Best of this.
Yeah.
That, if you walk out there now, there's not one drop of water if I'm driving my truck across it, I mean.
Yeah, I drive by all the time. The, the other piece that generally caught my attention is looking at the commercial end of it. You know, I think that hip roofs and everything coming off that are decent looking, since it's at grade, do you really need the railings across the front of it?
No, it's not. I don't know.
So.
Maybe somebody's going to put some chairs out there, I don't.
My, my general thought on a commercial piece is you want it to look a little more inviting from that end, and this looks more like the back off of the house and the.
Good.
Like a commercial. From my standpoint, I would look at, usually I'd go a, a little higher window so you have a.
Yeah.
It fits more of a commercial office type environment. Place like that, it just. It's just a gass.
They'll save you money, but.
Yeah, plus you probably have a sign next to the door.
Yes, sign.
Next to the driveway. With the railing, maybe they have difficulty.
True, that's true.
Yeah, the depth, what's the depth of that porch, like three feet?
It's four feet, uh, as far as the floor goes, five feet for the roof. I was again looking to set a solar panel, maybe, uh, solar panels come forty-one inches, so maybe. Goes on. There's so much sun out there, that's why I had all the pine trees taken down in the front. Is to invite that sun to hit this roof in the wintertime. Because this thing could run itself for electricity.
Yeah.
Our sons are the solar business, so I've been learning a lot about it.
So, solar is permitted in the, in the town center, so it's already permitted use.
That's good, I didn't think. Okay.
What's the distance, uh, between the houses, about thirteen feet?
Just about, yeah.
I was looking at that rear drive, rear parking area in the Hammerhead. And I'm thinking the distance, you have to run driveways down to each garage.
I could close, I could make it.
Yeah. Originally, I thought, originally, I was thinking of a road right off the lower parking lot. Houses three and four. And then a T-intersection, modified T-intersection that would go up, left, and over right. Could even use for snow, you know, push the snow into the property setbacks and, um, and then off that, you would have maybe two spaces for each unit for a visitor, maybe a second car.
So my thoughts behind that were twofold, one is the slope.
Slope is a problem.
The slope on that left side, you see that?
Yep.
All right, at two sixteen, two eighteen. So that, that's going to be a nice, easy slope to go up. And second is getting a fire truck up there and then getting enough swing around it. And straightening that rig out to turn around, again, engineering has to address that. But I see what you mean as far as that long parallel line I have, I mean, that, that could be turned towards the buildings that I.
Play with it, right?
Yeah, someone other than me.
The chief, you know, the chief's happy. Just having the turnaround, he'll be happy.
Yeah, yeah, but you're right, there's a lot of distance in between the unit and that, and to me, that's kind of wasted space because it, it could be recreational use on the other side of that driveway. And, and I, I'll have some somewhere and that would make sense to put it there. Your comment about the rail downstairs, you're right, that's essential. The windows taller would look commercial.
I just think it would be more inviting from a company, marketing it as a commercial space.
Yeah.
To either rent or sell, it'll, it'll actually create a market for it where it's.
It's, it's different than, they're not, I think they would. So the windows above, um, were designed that way for a reason, the third floor are two up windows in a master bedroom. Basically for privacy. Under that is the kitchen window. So that's going to be waist-high, right? After that. So, but the view is out back and. For the residential, the aesthetics part.
Keep in mind on this, is looking at the fact that all these roof lines kind of fit together.
Yeah.
And dump, it, when they're dumping snow, you could, being south facing, that's going to come off first.
Yeah.
It's dumping it right in front of your commercial door. So you're going to end up, you know, in their, in your free start cycle, that's going to be a little bit of a nightmare for somebody. Because it's going to dump.
Have to address that. We'll have to address that, I'll have to think about that.
Especially with.
Yeah, solar panel, yeah.
Sure, they shed snow.
The whole snow wall?
They shed snow.
Shed snow.
Like metal, they're like metal roofs, they just slips right out.
So it needs some sort of, uh, something to direct.
Maybe if it was a metal, metal, you put snow clips, I don't know what you'd do with panels.
I was thinking about doing metal ones on these, but. Somehow they look, virtual shingles just look so much more finished.
If you can, if your, if your objective is to focus on a green style home, have you considered doing something that looks maybe even a little bit more modern and has a shed style roof so that it's, the whole roof is south facing and sloped? Would change. For a build end, I think your cost would be a whole lot easier because you don't have your construction.
So you're, you're saying eliminate the hip off the bath? That's what I was getting, thinking of as a, as a rafters ban, because the, the, the building is twenty-three wide. So I've got a ten-foot run. That makes it, if I go the other way, I'm like forty feet. And then I get into all kinds of pre-engineered lumber. Yeah. Yeah. I'm open to suggestions, you guys.
You know what I mean, there's got to be a happy medium there.
There is some suggestions, the, the last part of the mixed use says, such a developer must comply with the design guidelines standards set forth in the site plan. So there are some suggestions and the look we're looking for.
In the master plan?
In the site plan regulations. There's a section on the look, the look.
Okay.
The architectural look.
I'll go to some staff for that.
It's. Yeah, I think it fits here, but it, that's got to be addressed and it's kind of subjective, so it's like, it's not hard and fast to tell you what to do. So, but it says you gotta make, you gotta make people happy with the, with the design.
It was kind of a colonial look with the forges and stuff like that.
Individual buildings, kind of twofold, one, it allows you to baze your build of it, and then from a second standpoint, it also, um, limits the size so it further mitigates some fire, some of the expanded fire.
I thought that was probably lower on the, on the measurement scale of privacy than windows on all walls.
It's nice not to share a wall.
It's right, it's nice not to have a shared wall. Yeah, otherwise you're living in an apartment. Yeah, no, this is a, this is my wife, she always has ideas.
Just was sitting there.
Oh, you were just saying.
Mine can.
I asked her to come sit here as she said that.
Sit here. Up here to the table.
So you are speaking, you must come. My better half anyway, she's, she's the brains, so you were saying.
Um, no, I was saying the reason why to separate it, make it look like a, sort of like a village, rather. Commercial building, like what is on Route nine, or what is going up behind the Christmas dove. Um, trying to make, give it a little bit of charm, um, I do agree with your thoughts about the railing in the front. Um, the hip roof in the front was going to go over like a, either a sidewalk or walkway or something in front of the building, so you'd have some coverage going into the commercial area as well as having a solar panel. Um, I do agree with windows. I think we talked about that, but it's like, well, what if somebody is, wants an office space and they don't want big windows or a yoga studio, you don't want to be seeing in or whatever, but, I mean, that's something we can work with. Uh, like I said, the, trying to stagger it, to work with the land, to make it look more natural, um, to, you know, to give it a little bit more of a, a village type of a feel rather than a big line of buildings with, you know, a block of commercial space.
I think this looks a bit of a Real House concept, I agree.
Yeah. And, and by limiting the size of the commercial space, you do limit what you can put in there, obviously, you're not going to put a restaurant in there, you're not going to put a childcare center, and it's going to be professionals. You know, like you said, either a accountant or a masseuse or, or something like that, um, someone that just needs some office space, and the, the fact that you brought up, you know, someone that wants a home business. That's, you know, I mean, it is a, a perfect opportunity with that, or giving the residential still that privacy on the top, some recreational use in the back and, you know, so anyways, that's what we.
Are they to buy, I mean, how are you on payments?
They will be a combination of the two. Some will be sold, some will be kept. More than fifty percent need to be sold in order for VA or FHA to find you. So if I kept any, it would be two. Yeah. I'd like to see homeowners in here, and, and I'm even going to have restrictions on occupants on residential units. Don't want, um.
Well, they're two-bedroom units. No.
No, because of the septic use, because it's on Route nine, I wouldn't want my kid out there on a bicycle. You know, there's no sidewalk out there. So. Really, it's, it's really on a state highway. So I kind of be careful of how, what we sell and how it gets used.
At the same point, there's, there's a need for, um, smaller houses, people that are retired or downsizing, or maybe just starting out. You know, um, wanting to make it affordable, but still very attractive and private, and, you know, like I said, back from the road and, and to, to have some living space back there, it's recreation space, while still providing some, um, commercial space in the front. So that's why the parking is separate and, you know, we try to, I don't know, maintain as many trees as we could out there and then just work with the, the topography of the, of the lot. So.
So, uh, looking, thinking about the, um, trash removal, how are you going to handle that? You know, your.
That'd be part of the HOA, I think.
The mail.
Might be a dumpster and whatever the post office wants us to do, I doubt they'll turn in there. There might be a bank of boxes at the end of the driveway or something, I don't know. Same as a fire chief, he may want that cistern at the road so he can use it at other locations or on the lot, whatever he wants.
What's the distance back, back in?
From the road to the units?
Yeah.
Have to scale that.
I, I mean, looking, I see the fifty-foot setback mark, and then it looks like it's probably hundred and fifty feet back into the parking area and then.
If you look at the two lines, Andy, on the right side of the survey, you've got ninety-two point four-nine to that first pin where the stone wall starts, and you have another hundred and fifty to the second pin, so. You're about two hundred and forty feet, two hundred and thirty feet back.
And you have frontage on the nine at two hundred and thirty-seven feet, so if you take that rotated. Like just beyond the little driveway, we'd be about quite a ways back.
Again, I had to work with that slope.
Yeah.
You know, that, it's just, uh, if, if I didn't, if I didn't use the slope to my advantage, it, this lot would be, wouldn't be worth developing. Cutting that down. And I know from test pits that that area up on two thirty-two is some ledge, it's not real solid, I can break it up, but nonetheless, there it is. It's there. You guys want to see a bigger building, you don't want, you want taller windows, just like to see. The, the overall feel of this though, how do you guys feel about that?
I like it.
I like it. I'm trying to visualize it, it just feels a little weird.
We don't have to have a poker in front of my computer, it's just, what do you see?
Well, it's just at the commercial side, ju- just from a flow end, when I come in, I just see this big parking area and then these staggered buildings, but I, I don't see how that they, how they flow up through. I'm, I'm struggling with visualizing how this driveway runs up back. How it, how it lays out. Um, like a good feeling, and honestly, like I look at it, if I'm thinking about developing it, if I were developing, developing it, I, it's like, you've got a lot of asphalt going in.
Oh, hell yeah, I didn't even scale that, I have no idea.
Yeah.
Just drawing lines. Um, I think I need to make it twenty feet wide, I think, for in and out. And I'm sure I drew it bigger than that. So until engineering gets their hands on this, I, this is the part that I did and.
I think you have.
Placing them on the lot, like the units on the lot, after that, engineering step. And I'm sure we'll be landscaping.
I think visualizing some landscaping. It's right now what you're seeing of that.
Well, I know, and it is hard to, you know, to visualize parking, you know, in front of each unit, there's going to be handicap park. Yeah.
They had done a conceptual, uh, engineering before. And it was more of an oval shape. A way in and it circled its way out, and it was very nice, but I just couldn't reproduce it with the tools I have for doing it.
Well, and what I'm thinking about is if you think about a small, smaller family unit or someone of that sort, when they come in, you, you have, whoever's there has no, no back porch, no back space. Which means anything they do is going to be in the front of our house, so I start thinking about what am I going to see in the front of my house, is it potentially a small kid's playpen, is it a grill?
I'm thinking about putting in the back some sort of a hip roof. Some sort of a hip roof area where everybody, when shared by everybody, and it'll be sixty feet long, and each person will own ten feet of that for their limited personal use. So that'll be limited common area, so they have their grill under there, they'll do whatever they want.
So it's outdoor, just, yeah.
Or is it, or is it worth just doing a common pavilion back there?
That's what, that's basically what we're talking about, some type of.
Not a pavilion, but assigning some spaces so that somebody doesn't come take the whole thing, I'm just trying to have some control.
Right, but it's going to be the front for them, they're going to drive in.
Yeah.
And then there's, that's why I see you have backyard, backyard in the sense that there's nothing behind them to go in, so everything they do is going to be what would be.
Yeah, their backyard is Route nine.
Yeah.
Right, so to, I'll, I'll add something else I'm working on. Peanut butter behind me, and we have a verbal agreement, I had an intern drop it off, I dropped it off, I heard review. There's an eighteen-acre parcel directly behind me, who's going to lease it to me, allowing me to cut trails through there, they're already existing anyway. That will be open to these people to use until she says we can't use it anymore, that's my agreement. So, it, it is, if I was looking for a place to hang my hat while I'm in a warmer climate and I want to live here in the summer, I would live here in a second. I think it would be a nice spot. Once you drive around the back and you have your garage, your front doors there, you've got a porch to sit on there, and whatever you're looking at, it's all woodland out there. It's going to be a nice setting. I don't think I'm going to have a hard time selling.
Yeah, no, I don't think so either.
These people on top, the residential, will not have a bed. They won't own it, that will be separate, there'll be limited common area for commercial use.
Just so you know, under, there is an open space requirement in the town center, fifteen percent of the tract rose acreage is open spaces.
Right.
So that's. It's not a mixed use section though. Fifteen percent is required of mixed use as well. Under, uh, three point three point six. Which is under, which is under mixed use. So, the recreational stuff he's talking about, I mean, open space. Obviously, you have, together with us.
I surveyed one.
Conservation? Conservation or laundry?
Yeah.
ZB, oh.
If you watch the meetings, you'd know that.
I don't, I just look at the, the outcome from it and see.
I think John's studying this to do some thing, John, in minutes.
Well, it does have a.
Yeah, I'll have fifty percent, fifteen percent. I'm going to cover any for that.
Well, I'm just saying that back area is going to be.
Back area where the septics and all that are going back, okay, yes. Yeah, well.
If there's a pavilion, that's separate from the fifteen percent for public use.
Well, I think that'd be included. Well, wouldn't be public use, it's.
That's why I brought up, that could be part of the fifteen percent.
So when you say part of, that, that is, I would be fifteen percent beyond that pavilion.
No, the pavilion would be included in fifteen percent.
But this is fifteen percent for open space or civic use.
Okay.
Or indoor, so that fifteen percent can be used for either.
Say civic use, you're talking public use.
Right, and he's talking about this for.
Either.
Right, this would.
You don't have to do it, you can do open space or.
Or civic, so you're, we're good.
Okay.
So as long as we have fifteen percent of the lot open.
We're good, we all in agreement with that now?
Basically, you, you're taking fifteen percent of that lot and you're.
Right, okay.
You're going to have more than that.
Because of your density, your layout, you're doing that anyways.
I'm also trying to stay away from the residential house to my left, bring everything to the right. That's a cape over there, they're in the Village Center District, but they've been there forever. And I'm on it, I just want to give as much privacy as we can. This sets way beyond their house.
I actually like. Something I agree with, I'd like to want to listen.
Yeah, yes.
And that's definitely what we.
And the landscaping you do on the approach and slope. I like the look of the one at Christmas Dove, that's going to have ten actually above.
Right. And you see that all over the place in Dover, and it just looks very, you know, it looks very commercial, and we want.
We have no infrastructure to be Dover, for one thing, and, uh.
We just want something to feel more villagey, I guess, you know? So.
I like that you're trying to create a little pavilion for that people to live there.
You know what we do, my husband was a custom home builder for many, many years, and when we do things and even just leave it to me and tore it apart, and what would I like, you know?
You got to get that.
So I'm sorry, so I mean, you know, you only see part of the floor plan here, but whatever, but it's like, what, what do I want to walk for, I want big hills, I want this or that. We're trying to do something that we would like ourselves.
Build it if we want one ourselves, that's, that's, and I know that doesn't make any, any difference.
No, but I mean, so that is part of it. Look, and still, how it would be to sit there and what we would try to back out our trees or trick up the building or something like that. try to see back at trees or trick of the building or something like that.
Maybe on that today.
Thought has gone into
Something, you know. If you don't like grills on the on the patios, maybe you put a grill out in that
That's a pavilion, that's what we're talking about, yeah.
Too close to the building you have it on.
Seen it done. My brother did it and my sister.
I think that what I'm hearing you guys say, I'm a little concerned about Mr. Allen, that you're not sure as far as how I'm mixing these uses or
No, 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 just saying that permitted use is all good to go, conditional approvals be a different story.
So in other words, if we were, if we had in the HOA, and I'm trying to understand here, that we restricted
I would just
Okay, all right.
List all your permitted uses
Okay.
Component in your HOA and if you think there's something that's a conditionally put that in there as your list of requests for approval before this board
Okay.
So any one of your six commercial units would already be pre-approved at
Gotcha.
That's something you would like there.
Okay.
For example, self storage is not, you can't do that.
Right.
Also is a good way if there's something you intentionally want to make sure
Right.
Then you get to leave that out saying, look, it may be a
Okay, okay.
Biggest bang for the buck on this lot, you guys, really? It's it's zone for it, it's proud, you drive in, go around, come out, I'd make a fortune. But boy, it would be some ugly. Crackerbell, again, I've been hearing that's coming.
So ideas that you guys have of of what you think would would um
I think we need to look at what the the reference is for us to look at for a plan to make it
There's a lot of things that are permitted, a lot of things.
Yeah.
I mean, I quickly looked at it, things like accountant, stuff like that, that's all covered.
Yes.
Lawyer.
Yeah, yeah.
Can't do landscape, uh, you know.
Nobody wanna put a kettle in there.
Probably not, it's allowed though.
Yes, but I mean, yeah, but you're thinking, you also wanna think of the people that are gonna be, oh, you know, I'm
I can't even do a driving range, really.
Creditly, you can't do a distillery.
I don't know.
You know what, I haven't thought of it.
Sit out on the farm.
Sample.
Go for the ice cream.
You guys, really appreciate you staying here, I know it's really hot, thanks for your input and um with your thoughts, we'll work on this and come back and
Good luck.
Thanks.
Appreciate all the
You got your own, huh? Yeah, she said she knew you wouldn't share.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, like I know we, I know where the, I I've seen it done numerous
Mr. Chair?
We are done with everything, reports, other reports or committees, I know there's a guy here on the master plan steering committee who had a meeting on June twenty fifth, is there July twenty first, is there a, an update from the members of our board?
And we talked a lot about how to distribute the survey.
Yeah. We discussed everything in the world in that meeting.
Yes, he did.
Everything in the world.
It was a robust discussion.
I believe it.
So um Vanessa at the beginning of the meeting wanted to come back to um something, but I'll be candid, I don't remember what it was and without having it in writing for me to like probably focus on at this point in the evening, you're not gonna get a lot of substance out of it.
That's right, um, we can address that. It was just more of the goals.
Who wants to think about them? I would make a motion that if you could just send a list of that to us, so you would like us to think about things you would like us to think about and we will discuss it at the next meeting, that way gives us Things you think we're reasonably capable of achieving. That'll narrow the list a lot.
Yeah.
Narrow the list a lot. We can achieve anything, Ron, with enough effort.
Can we achieve adjournments?
In just a moment. What's your name again?
Whatever you want it to be.
Okay, looking for a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion.
Second it.
Third. Andy, I'm AMI.
Jesse, you're I.
Alan, N. Happy, thank you everybody, have a good evening.